Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular board meeting. The time is seven oh four. We'll call the meeting to order. Our first order of business is to do the pledge of allegiance if everybody will be right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, whose republic we just stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next order of business is a call call. David Olson. You here?
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Scott, here. I'm here. Jan?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
And Mr. Lixup is not able to make it with us tonight. Was meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was. It's a reminder that this meeting is being recorded.
Okay, do we have anybody with any public comment tonight?
Did you record everything prior to it going on, everything going virtual or not? I'm just curious about that.
Just the regular board meetings.
You did always record.
Starting in 2015.
Oh, really, that one? I was just kidding.
Okay, hearing no public comment, we have no highlight in you. Move on to our next order of business, which is comments from board members and superintendent with, starting with our introduction of our 2021 spring election school board candidates. Erica, I see tonight, and we have Josh, I think is going to join us later. We have David, Ruse, Vince Trudell in the audience there, and myself. And at this time, I guess I would like to give each of you an opportunity to maybe fill us in a little bit of who you are and why you're right. Want to stand up to the podium, that would be great.
And if, if you want, it's allowable to take your mask off for your speaking.
Thank you. Okay, I am Erica Herring, and I've lived in the district since nineteen ninety-eight, and I think it's a great place to live. It's close proximity to the Twin Cities, but a small town community. My husband graduated in nineteen ninety-three, that's Matt Herring. And we have three sons who currently attend the school. One is a senior, one is a sophomore, and the youngest is an eighth grader. And they are all involved in, in their athletics.
And one's driving.
One is newly driving on Sunday, yeah.
I knew it was like.
You're, yes, you know. And they both have, they probably saw that.
Probably.
So I think that being in this school, in this district, for thirteen years has given me the opportunity to be the eyes and the ears kind of, and listen to teachers, community members, teachers, and just know what people are thinking about and what hot topics are. So that many sports activities, usually almost every night of the week, that you get to hear what the community's thinking, what they dislike, what they are proud of, and what I see as needs or things that are working, things that I'm proud of, what the kids are happy with. So those are some of my thoughts about that. My background history is I grew up on a small farm in Plum City, Wisconsin, and graduated from there and went to the psychologist Katherine. Graduated with an occupational therapy degree in nineteen ninety-seven. After that, I worked in healthcare and long-term care facilities, hospitals, and then in a pediatric outpatient clinic that specialized in autism and other developmental disabilities. After that, I worked for Alden Woodville School District for thirteen years as their occupational therapist and as a district-wide employee. So that gave me knowledge, gives me knowledge of what it's like to be an employee in a school district and, but also like what it takes for every child to have a great education because I was in the special ed department. And so had to do the IEPs but also be in classrooms throughout my day. So that takes me to, I also worked at WITC for a year. I taught in their OT assistance program. And with three little kids, it just became a lot, so stepped back from that. And when, so I worked for Alden Woodville for thirteen years, and Matt, I purchased Marco Septic at that time. And to make sure that my kids and my business were priority, I stepped down from that position at Alden and dove right into Marco Septic, which we've owned since twenty fourteen. Within Marco Septic, Matt is, does all of the stuff they work, and the kids do the portable toilets, they deliver, clean them, everything, and I run the business, every single aspect of it. So I have that now as well, to run a business physically responsible, licensing, home receivable, payable, everything that you can imagine, which the district is a business, and so I could bring that experience as well. Some of my experience with the district, besides the kids being in school, is that we have been an Eker sponsor for the district for five years, and very proud to support St. Croix Central Athletics. It makes, it really just makes us very proud to be a part of athletics and support them and give them what they need, always asking what can we do to help. That's our passion, and I know other people have passions in performing arts or whatever, but that's how our passion is towards, because that's where our kids are in, and that's the easiest to see, the need for, so. What else? I guess my vision for being a St. Croix Central school board member is to bring my business knowledge and my background of working in the school district and combine them and align them to help the board, help the community, help educators, and that children have the best possible education they can in all aspects. And my vision, I guess, is to be known as a district that provides excellence, excellent education, and anything that we offer the children. So I think. Do you guys have any questions for me about my experience or what my vision is?
Not at this point, Erica. Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, may I have you next?
My name is David Ruse. I grew up in St. Croix Central, graduated in nineteen ninety. Currently have three children attending, two older children that graduated, first grader, second grader, sixth grader, and junior. Most of my kids are highly involved in the drama that we put on here as St. Croix Central. My sixth grader is definitely in the sports. We get to see quite a bit of that. I'm, I've been involved in a lot of different groups in the school district, most recently the Andrew Perry Group and the Teen Year Old Age Party, Health Plan Health, five years of me. And I'm just proud to be a member of this district and want to do whatever I can to help them forward, what I do.
Thank you.
Josh came in.
Go get your mask off, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Josh, I'm married to Carrie, my wife, for twenty-one years now. We have three boys, twelfth grader Jackson, tenth grader Jeff, and a fifth grader named Joe. We've lived in the district for twelve years now. We chose this area because of the community. One, we really like the idea of having some land and some space, but also when it's time, you know, to join people who love the community. I'm a college soccer coach. I coach soccer at University Northwestern Cities. I've been there for seventeen years now. I've also coached a lot of the, my boys' teams from baseball, basketball, the rec, soccer. My wife was on the rec board for a while, I helped out there, and also we ran rec soccer here in St. Croix. I think we have some great teachers, we have great bus drivers, we have great faculty and staff at our school, and I think proof of that is that we're in school, we're in class, and we still have activities, which my kids are highly involved with sports here at the school. I feel like the many reasons that we are a great community, one of them is because when it's time to help out, it's time to kind of come together. I think what I've seen from parents and faculty staff is that we show up, we volunteer, and we help out. And by doing this, I believe that I was kind of called to do this, or asked to do this, kind of what I could add to the board. I think we've been involved a lot. I think this is another way that I can help serve, kind of go along and follow the example that other teachers, other faculty staff, and other parents here have kind of chipped in to help. So, yeah, thanks for the opportunity to speak, so I was late, and someone's don't want to drive very well in the snow. I appreciate the time, thank you. If there's questions, we ask if there's questions, if they have anything.
Let's take a short break.
Thank you.
Thanks, we have Vince. Welcome.
Hey. I feel like I want to ramble, I need to take this mask off. I'm Vince Trudell. I've lived in this area, this district, my entire life. St. Croix Central's really all I, I know, my wife and I, we moved around, but the one thing that I was, the one requirement I was, was that we need to stay in St. Croix Central, that's finally a requirement, she had to choose all of this stuff. I've got three children, sophomore Brandon, sixth grader Gads, and our youngest Chili's in fourth grade. I know when you're in this position, you probably don't get too many thank yous or whatever, Chris, I love you, but I just want to thank you guys for making the school year happen this year because two of my children, I don't know how well they would have survived in online or whatever, virtual learning, and I think that the teachers did a good job of that for the little time we had to do it, but thank you for making the school year happen this year. Like I said, I grew up here, my, my parents graduated from St. Croix Central. Let's see what else there is right here. I didn't type this out, I'm never really done with all the type I put in the school That's pretty much it, I think. Yeah. I guess as far as what I can contribute, pretty good history, I think that I represent pretty much the basic St. Croix Central resident when I come, sit around the table, I'm pretty average guy. My work careers, all in the trades, eating and air conditioning, so give you a little bit of knowledge when it comes to ventilating in these buildings, I think that's probably going to be an important topic to put out. I just want to wish all these guys luck, and it's kind of cool to be on a level, give all of this stature, so. Thanks for a long time to tell you about yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'm on the list too, but I don't know how much I have to say anymore. I've been on the board for a long time. There's served in a lot of different roles over the years. Kind of dedicated my life to serving the community. For those that don't know of my ancient history, I served on the rescue squad in Roberts for twenty-three years. We were, we were able to get one of the first electronic defibrillators in the state for a first responder unit back thirty years ago now. Advanced airways drugs, pretty well equipped. I started the school board in nineteen ninety-nine. Since then, I've served many years as the board president. Other activities, I've, I'm a mentor or board members through the State Association, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Always, I serve as a volunteer there to try and mentor new school board members and try and help them with their problems, try and get our own board members up to speed as quickly as I can, so they're not struggling. Trying to figure out school finance and things like that. School finance, I think, you have to go with the test, is a system that is unlike any other system, business. I also serve on the academic standards review board for the Department of Public Instruction, so I guess those that have complaints about the state standards, although written, I guess I will take partial responsibility of that. I've served on that now for five years. But we reviewed, we have reviewed all the standards to bring them up to date and to make sure that they're teaching to a level that our students and learn what they need to learn. Prompt and efficient manner. The standards are just that, standards, minimum standards of what students need to know. The big problem is most people think standards are curriculum, and they are not. The state sets the standards, the state superintendent reviews them, and the state legislature also reviews them for final approval. With that, and it's up to the districts to decide how they're going to teach it, and that's the curriculum. So hoping to serve another term. I think we have some odd things that we are trying to accomplish, I would like to be part of, to try to finish this up. Look forward to this spring election for both election and filling the spots on this board. I'm very proud of this district and what we have achieved and how far we have advanced in twenty years that I've been here, and look forward to seeing it get better and better each year. So with that.
How many spots are available, two or three?
Three, three spots.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't think anybody has any questions for me, but I would open it up if anybody's got any questions.
I guess I do have one question. I mean, it's just kind of a typical, so does the board elect the president?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think this is a free decision.
Yeah, it's typically what will happen is we have the election, and once we have the election, there's, by the time they get certified, there's another two weeks beyond that, so those that are elected on the sixth will not officially start their term until the third Tuesday, April, which will be the day after a regular board meeting. So they will come on board following. We usually have a board learning meeting, and then we have our first regular board meeting, which will be the third Monday in May. We have a reorganization meeting, which the board will elect a slate of officers, which will include the president, vice president, clerk, treasurer.
It's a lot in your first meeting. It's, I think there's a lot of stuff in your job before the first one.
We've, you know, and there's a lot of other businesses that we have to take care of, such as what is the official publication for the district? I don't know how many other things. We've got a seven, representative for the CSL Annual Meeting. I think they have to designate a candidate for the delegate assembly for the state convention of the Wisconsin State School Boards Association. And there's a lot of other mechanics that we have to go through in our organization. Plus, we have to handle our regular business that might also.
The good thing is they end the day they start. So there is a hook on.
Any other questions that I can answer? Okay, here none. Are there any other? Are there any questions online? Great. Here none, then we will move on. Are there any other comments from board members or the superintendent?
I would just like to thank all five candidates for putting themselves out there for serving the district. Good luck to everybody. Good luck. I don't know if you can watch parties or not in this one.
I ask my kids if they wanted to come with, and they're like, Simon looked at me, he's like, you know how many sports events I've been to? I'm all over. I can't support you, buddy.
And just for, for the public's convenience, the three spots that are being voted on are my spot, the Ann's spot, Howard's spot, so the two of us are being done on the boards, resigning.
To fulfill their terms.
Some of us weren't easily on this.
How long was it for?
Three years.
Three years.
Okay, we don't have any scheduled presentations at this time, so we'll go into our financial reports.
You don't have a pandemic. It's like three. Bank account balances as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. Citizen state checking, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. Citizen state money market, seventy-two hundred, two dollars, thirty-six cents. Citizens money market fund, forty-six, fifty-three dollars, six cents. Citizens money market suicide prevention fund, sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars, ninety-six cents, for total bank account balances of four hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and seven cents.
Who do accept?
I got a motion, David. Do we have a second? Second. Second, Brian, accept the treasurer's report as presented. Any discretion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda, which consists of our approval of our meeting minutes from our February fifteenth meeting. Approval of the meeting minutes for our board learning meeting of March first. Approval of our bi-monthly bills of March twenty twenty-one. Approval of resignations and retirements of Pamela Katner, executive admin assistant. Jessica Parsons, our half-time first grade teacher. Scott Newell, our five-and-a-half-hour grounds custodian. Approval of appointments and contract modifications. Contract for a full-time sixth grade social studies teacher, Ian Horton. And a full-time middle school reading and ELA interventionist, Laura Fern Weber, well as curriculum modification requests for students to enroll in full-time and part-time virtual education courses, of which we have at this point, believe we have one part-time and two full-time for a total of three students. And also approval of student participation in early college credit program in the fall of twenty twenty-one, which I believe board members got a list of those students.
Move approval of consent agenda as presented.
Okay, I have a motion, Scott, second, Deanne. Approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I would like to also recognize Pam is retiring after many years, and I wish her the very best in her retirement. She has been very essential to the smooth operations of the district. I can't emphasize that enough, so we wish everyone else the best in the future here.
I would just, yeah, I would just add, you know, her resignation, retirement is effective August thirty-first. This was done intentionally, obviously, so her position is posted. We'd like to get that person selected within this next three weeks or so, and then be able to do some training and transition so that that transition is smooth, just because that position requires so much training and it's so critical. So it's accepted and official, you know, tonight, but she won't stand serving the district until the end of August.
How hard if you lose the election, you can take that spot?
Too much bookkeeping for me. I had accounting at college and I didn't do well in that because I couldn't stay awake. So I leave that to the rains. Okay. With that. We've voted on this already, right?
Yeah.
But you hope badly, maybe. The next item on the agenda is administrative reports, starting with our student enrollment update.
All right, our NSEES count has remained steady this month at one thousand, four hundred and ninety-two students and seats, and our free introduce lunch rate stays pretty steady at twenty-three percent of our students at free introduce lunch. And in terms of open enrollment and charter schools, we have three hundred and seventy-five students open enrolled in, one hundred and twenty-three open enrolled out, or a net plus of two hundred and fifty-two students. And of those open and enrolled students, two hundred and seventy-three are in our virtual charter school as compared to two hundred and one at this time. Last year, about seventy-two students, and we have one hundred and sixty-one students, our resident students, in our virtual school. So total in our virtual school is about three hundred and thirty-four students that we are serving virtually. I'm sorry, four hundred and thirty-four students.
Four hundred and thirty-four, not three, thirty-one.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you know offhand what resident virtual count was last year, roughly comparatively?
It was typically in a full-time, twenty-five.
Okay, so we have a hundred and thirty or forty that are in because of COVID. That shows virtual school instead of, thank you.
Okay, any questions for Tim with regards to the student enrollment update?
It'll be interesting now how many of those stay. They really, whether it's effective and they, you know what I mean? It'll just be interesting how that works.
Well, it's been an interesting year, and I'm hoping, assuming that some of the stuff that's going on will come to an end and we can get back to some sense of normalcy.
I don't know if interesting's the right word.
It's a word.
I can think of some other ones. I can think of some other ones.
I'm trying to be diplomatic. Oh, it'll, it'll be interesting to see what happens. Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion on future district needs and priorities. Again, we have been very busy the last week.
From eleven B.
Eleven B, okay. Yes, I am. Okay, forgive me. Eleven B Athletic Award. Director, Brian Johnson. I know this is a discussion that came up last spring. He had concern by one of our underclassmen with regards to seniors being awarded letters for spring sports. And they did not get that same opportunity. We promised them last year that we would have a discussion regards to that closer to the next spring. Now it is now the next spring, so. Brian, I will turn it over to you and discuss this, I guess, where we're at.
Sure. To give a little history, I guess, would make sense if people weren't around. Last spring, obviously, sports were, spring sport seasons were canceled. And so students didn't have the opportunity to earn letters because you couldn't earn a letter if you didn't play the season. And that was a conference-level decision that it was talked about prior to myself being hired, but we had discussions about it, said we'd revisit it. And last year's seniors kind of got grandfathered in for their senior year of their spring sport seasons and that left us with, you know, the juniors, the current, the past juniors and sophomores, which are now current juniors and seniors. So we brought it up again to our middle border conference A Ds. And said, okay, here we are, same question. What do we do with those kids that lost their opportunity to letter last year? And what we came up with is if a student earned a letter in twenty nineteen, and then they lost their season last year and they're out for that sport again this spring, we'll grant them a letter based on the fact that their sport seasons were basically bookended by successful seasons. And that's the, that's the thinking right now of the middle border conference A Ds. I'm personally in favor of that as well. I think it would have been an easier decision to just make this decision last spring and solve the problem altogether. But we'll, we'll fix it this spring. And so the current freshmen will be impacted because they would have been eighth grader last year. The current sophomores aren't impacted because they didn't have the opportunity to earn a letter as a freshman or during their eighth grade year, of course. So we're only talking about the current juniors and seniors that were out and earned a letter in twenty nineteen. They lost last year and all their old first springs were again this year. If that makes sense.
Same sport.
Same sport.
Some, someone might ask, why is it relevant to this one, one letter, right?
My, my question was.
In the grand scheme. Picture of a four-year career and what that could be. Maybe want to speak to that?
Yes. To, to, to some people, it may not seem like much. To others, as they're putting it on a resume or a college application or applying for scholarships or looking to, to earn an award or earn some, you know, some distinction from others, that, that letter does matter and does come into play. And it's also, a letter is an acknowledgement of the hard work and the career that you've put in. And that's why I like, personally, again, that's why I like the, the bookends. If you've done the work to, to earn a letter in twenty nineteen, you do the work to earn a letter now, it's very likely you would have lettered last year had there been a season. They've lost quite a lot already. I, it, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt anyone for them to earn a letter based on the fact that they showed us that they would have earned it or deserved it. That's my feelings.
Yeah, like it's an accomplishment or prestigious to say, you know, I was a four-year letter winner. Or if you're a three-sport athlete, I was a twelve, I earned twelve letters in high school.
You didn't play that year. You didn't play that spring. It's like, you're giving like a phantom letter, right? You're saying like, you know, I mean, like, well, if I would have done it, I would have gotten it, but I didn't, so I still get it. Right?
Yes.
But theoretically, every kid that's gone through school for generations and will again for generations had that opportunity. So one kid, because of COVID, has to put an asterisk on everything that he does, he or he does. And I think COVID has caused enough asterisks. I, I, I'd be in favor of eliminating as many unintended issues as we can.
And I, I fully understand the, the criticism of the thinking or the participation-driven aspect of this. I, I guess in the grand scheme of things, where my head goes to is, what does it hurt? To, to give those kids a letters. I don't, I don't think it hurts anything. Not giving them the letters can cause some kids some more pain or some more. Just that they already had it bad enough time. I guess I don't see, I don't see the harm in allowing them to earn the letter where I can see there can be some hard feelings that they don't, or don't get it.
Yeah, and it, it can always go back to the age-old argument that you have a senior on the team that may have only come out his senior year, didn't necessarily complete the requirements to earn that letter in that sport because he's a senior, he's awarded that letter. So, and that happens, it happens quite frequently. So this I don't see as a whole lot different than that.
I just think it's, and this is just, I don't know why I'm saying, collegiate athlete, all right? I get it. But I think in the big picture, we should be teaching kids like the letters, whether you got a letter or not, doesn't really matter in the real world. You know what I mean? Like that's, you know, like, why are we making, why is the school board talking about a letter? You know, like, there's just so many bigger issues than, and, you know, again, that's from, I played college basketball. You know, I just, I just can't get over that. So that's my piece. To the extent we need to vote on it. I'll still vote in favor, but I think it's, that's my opinion.
I don't think we vote on it. I think it's just more of an update of what, because we didn't vote the last time, right? It was more of just an update.
From the conference directive.
And we'll go then with the will of the group, right?
Students, right? And that's the reason of the conversation heard in first place.
It's to be responsive to.
To individual writing a letter to the board in the end.
About missing a letter?
Yes. So this is just palled through of the school district for that.
And it's not unique to us, the other middle border schools have had the same conversations with students, parents, same conversations. It's not, it's not just a single, central request or decision that's being made.
Any comments, David or Jeff?
No, I, I really can see both sides. I do, I, I guess I tend to lean more in the direction of just agreeing with Scott. These, these kids have so many asterisks through their last year and a half, two years of school, but it's just insane. I mean, I, I understand both sides, but I'm definitely in support of it.
Yeah, I agree. Kids have been through enough. Just give them a letter. You know, if they earned it last year and they are, the year before, and earning one now, just pretend as if there was a season because those, those kids would have earned a letter. I think it's fine.
Do the kids know that? Because my, some of my, my kids were saying that there is a senior, two seniors that were out for track, their sophomore year, and they're going to be doing baseball now. So then they went up there in that junior letter. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that athletes know that. Because that may, for these two boys that are going out for baseball, that may switch their minds of, because they are co-getters and the letter, I think, would be important to them. And maybe, you know, I don't know.
Did that come up at the meeting at all, that if you earn a letter in any sport about this year, that?
It did not. Our discussion was, our discussion was around same sport.
Let me just get to choose whichever letter you want. That's the fun part of it.
Two individuals would be, might make a different decision.
There, there is time our spring sports are delayed, their official start dates are delayed this year because the WIA started a fall sport season in the spring. And so our earliest spring sports don't get started until April nineteenth. And so we can't let the athletes know, and I can revisit within the middle board A Ds. Doesn't have to be same sport, gonna be any sport they enter letter in and, and take a look at it.
Since it was a conference decision, yeah, suggests bringing up, if that didn't come up, I mean, that's a great question. And let the conference decide on that. It has to be sport-specific or season-specific?
But the point remains, what's the communication plan?
Yeah, so just give me a little time to connect with the other A Ds and lay out the scenario and be, and how they feel and what they think.
And then communicate that to entire high school, student body or athletes, you know? Thanks for following up.
Okay. Oh, I think I'm bad about try. So, okay. With that, with done with the administrative reports, we'll move on to the key work of our school board, starting with our student staff and community recognition. Brian?
Devin Mosley, congratulations on taking third place at state wrestling. Abe Seiler and Jas, Jackson Pettit, congratulations on being chosen as first team members of middle border all-conference team. Colin Hackbars and Kelson Clint, congratulations on being named second team middle border all-conference players. Abe Seiler, congratulations, gave on being named basketball co-player of the year in the middle border conference. Randy Jordan, Randy, congratulations on your, your successful conference championship season and being named as middle border coach of the year. Did I say Jordan or did I say Johnson?
Jordan.
I read it quick and again, and I'm like, oh, Randy Johnson, the pitcher. Nice. Ali Spoo, thank you for your dedication, your time and efforts as your first-year S C C girls' basketball coach. Your effort standards and drive and not on the notice, keep up the great work. Melanie Newman, congratulations on directing the production of the high school, of High School the Musical Junior, an interesting and entertaining play, especially under the constraints of online production with the students. Alicia Benzer, congratulations on directing the production of High School Music, High School the Musical Junior, an interesting and entertaining play, especially constraints of online production of the students. And Leah Trittz as well. So for the same, we're all those together. Castro of the Middle School Production High, High School the Musical Junior. Congratulations on your hard work and dedication to this presentation as well. Kendall. Kendall Sunday, congratulations on being selected to the Big River Second Team All-Conference in Girls Hockey. Jacob Sanders, congratulations on being selected as honorable mention All-State Defenseman by the W H C A. Abe Seiler, congratulations on being selected first team All-State by the Wisconsin Basketball Coaches Association. Jackson Pettit, congratulations being selected as honorable mention to the All-State Basketball Team by the Wisconsin Coaches Association. Congratulations to all.
Congratulations to all those recognition, hard work, every one of them. I thank those who estimated those names also. So get those cards, we've got the card signed, so we'll get those out to those students and any members. Thank you all. Okay, next item on the agenda, exactly where I started ten minutes ago. Discussion on the future need, district needs and priorities. As I say, the last week or so has been a rather busy and eventful time. As I think most of you may have received the second mailer. We received ours on Friday with regards to the referendum, give some more information. Tim and I worked on a slideshow for community presentation that we'll, we'll give this week, starting tomorrow night, we'll be in-person meeting at the auditorium at the high school presentation, and then we will have a virtual session on Thursday.
Tuesday also has the virtual option.
Okay, so I'll have a virtual option on Tuesday as well, but we will be in-person at the auditorium with that presentation.
Wait, Tuesday and Thursday are in-person and Zoom both?
Just, just the Tuesday.
Tuesday's the only one at the auditorium, but they both have a virtual component.
Is the Thursday one then going to just be a replay or is that going to be a whole separate?
Separate.
Simple presentation?
It'll be presented from boardroom here.
Hopefully, different attendees and questions.
So. There was a notice sent out, I think, on the website with regards to that and an opportunity for people to fill in questions they may have. We will be able to compile those questions and answer those. I think I sent copies of this slide presentation to the board members that you can review and comment on. I don't know if anybody has any comments from what they saw.
I feel it's going to be recorded then so people can go back and watch it, so that it's posted somewhere.
Yep. I, I thought it was good. The only thing I'm going to do is print it and read it and unprint one more time just because I can't stuff there more than I do if it's on the screen.
Yeah, Tim's been through it. I've been through it probably two or three times, trying to get the formatting right and making sure the information is correct. I know there's been some talk on social media, some of it's not necessarily correct. So we're hoping to dispel some of the errors that have been put out in social media as well as answer the questions that the public has as far as why we are doing it, what the financial impact of doing it is. Showing some of the current conditions of some of our facilities. We have good facilities. But we just, and especially in our C T E areas, there just isn't enough room. We have students that are working on top of each other and we just need to get more space. Don't have adequate storage space. We don't have adequate space for projects that they're working on. We're hoping to get extra space for that. But we can get the students that want to participate, get them the, the space and the critical instruction quality that they deserve. And as far as the operational question, we will go over what we're looking at there and where we compare, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions. So Jeff or David, did you have a chance to look those, those over? Any comments?
I did. I thought the slide presentation was good. Yep, same here.
Well, we'll see what happens. We have had several requests for information from one of our citizens, including, I believe, at least two open records requests. We have fulfilled the first open records request, but the other one is pending, so. Soon as we get through some of the other stuff that we have to get done, we'll respond to that one. I don't know if there's any other questions or comments from board members.
I had not anticipated seeing the I had not anticipated seeing the ruthlessness and tastelessness of comments about our teachers in response to the and administrators in response to the uh, the revenue referendum for pay. I I did not anticipate having to, and it's only by, I'm saying that only about just with the posts that I've read on SCC Facebook, Community Facebook page. I just was blindsided by how people were gonna like make that. It it wasn't about whether, it was about whether you support our teachers or didn't support our teachers, or you support our administrators, you didn't, and it just it's been kind of ugly in my opinion to see that. And so I just think all of us probably should say thank you to those people, those teachers that we know, those administrators that we know that just because you're only seeing one side of it on comments in Facebook, that doesn't mean that there isn't a whole community that does support you. Both, uh, you know, administrators and teachers, and so um, I know I've been meaning to send something to my girls' teachers, and I just think people need to do that, and particularly in the administration too, you know, they they hit all that, all of them, it's one big group. And so it's it's just, it's harder to keep that, I think, and if I were a teacher, that would be very difficult to read, or administrator, very difficult to read.
Yeah. Some comments from some of the people I don't find surprising. So it doesn't mean it's right, careful.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean it's right, but it's not unexpected.
It was unexpected for me to read, to see that response, so just, you know, and you know, that could just be, you know, naive, but I, but I just, not me.
But I think what the community sometimes doesn't necessarily appreciate is the hard work that we have put in teachers and administration to keep the schools open. We are one of the few schools in in this even part of the state that has been running essentially full-based in-person schools since the first September. I don't think uh, everybody appreciates that and the effort.
That's all been put up.
Ancient history.
I know, I.
Sometimes I need to be reminded of that.
I it's it's very, it was really, it's very frustrating and it's, I just can't imagine being a teacher and doing those things. That's just gotta be awful. So there are people that aren't posting that feel differently.
I guess the last thing that I'll mention with regards to referendum information is we do have one more mailer that is being prepared. It will be mailed out at the vote on the April sixth election, so.
Is there more communication planned, or is this kind of, is it these two meetings and two mailers? Is there?
Yeah, there's uh, tons of information on the website there, and then there's also um, scheduled weekly social media posts. Yeah, I mean, that's that's about it. I mean, those, you have any other modes of communication that you can think of besides in-person, website, emails, social media, and uh, district-wide mailers? Well, that's pretty typical, I think, example.
In in the, you know, something that maybe is for the audience, I was like, the district-wide mailers don't just go to the households with students.
Right.
It's literally district-wide, right? So the entire district and everybody that's in the district gets the same mailers. Um, because I've seen a bunch of that, heard a bunch of that from people that were only picking households with students. That's not the case. It literally goes to every address, right? Most of the box.
Every.
In the district, so that's just to get that out there as well, like it goes to everybody.
Uh, the other thing that I have been working on during the past week is I have been calling uh, citizens, asking them if they would form a advocacy group. Which is uh, doing positive work, everybody that takes up in the community. Yeah, I have. And uh, the majority of the ones that I have asked have said yes, and a few no's. I wouldn't know for that, but uh, there's a couple of names that I wanna call, and then we will try and get that. That I'm taking care of, uh, using my personal resources, so. Go ahead.
One dial.
Yeah. Okay, I don't know if there's anything else that we have to cover, Tim, on that.
I don't think so. Nothing that we won't be covering in our evening sessions Tuesday and Thursday.
Thanks for your work on that.
Been an interesting uh, couple of these, so, but I've worked hard on it, Tim's worked extraordinarily hard on it.
Yeah.
Just just trying to get the information out. Get it in a format that people can easily understand.
Yeah, I just think more information is better than less, and so I'm just trying to figure out if there's other ways to get that. I don't know, you know?
We're we're at a disadvantage because we don't have local newspaper.
I know.
With COVID, it's limited on the on the meetings that we can have face-to-face.
Who reads the newspaper?
I'm old school.
Wants a newspaper.
I don't do social media. So. Uh, so, uh, we're working on it. I'm hoping that uh, we can get the information out, and we've part of the reason how we try to get these community meetings set up this week is because the N S M T ballots before that spring election started going out this week, who started earliest tomorrow. We wanted to make sure we get the information to those people. Also, uh, we've got spring break coming up right before the election. Wanted to make sure everybody got the information prior to that. We're working on it. Those are just some of the uh, areas we're having to overcome. Any other questions from the board? Any questions, Jeff or David?
Well, I'm good. No, nothing for me. I um, yeah, I we've been through it so many times before, um, every single time we try to get information out to the district, and it doesn't matter really how many different avenues or mediums we choose. Um, you know, we can shove information at people, but if they don't get it the way they want it, um, there's going to be a segment that is not happy with the way we've tried to reach out, and uh, yeah, I guess as far as like what Forrest Gump said, that's all I've got to say about that.
Okay. Okay, then we will, with that, we will move on to the next item. Is consideration of the support staff in Clement weather days.
Wanted to revisit this. Um, I know Waging Benefit Committee of the Support Staff brought it to the board and and uh, I guess two years ago already. Um, cause school year was cut short last year and never had those. Um, and we agreed, uh, bully, I want to confirm the agreement was um, support staff would be paid for Clement other days, just like certified staff. Um, but we wanted to get clarification on that, number one, and then secondly, if so, would there be a cap, like whether unlimited or I don't, we couldn't find in any of our records and um, what the final determination was at the board level, so just wanted to revisit that and hopefully make a decision so we can have it board approved and consistent moving forward. So we've had.
Howard.
I'm sorry, we had one this year and we paid for that, but it's not moving forward. We should have clarification. Uh, go ahead, David, sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, this is me. I I caught a pause there, so I thought you were done. Sorry about that. Um, to the best of my recollection, we were um, going to do that, but we had also said that we would want them to report, obviously, if safe to travel. We would want them to report to the district to do something. Um, it may not be their normal duties, uh, but definitely the the district could probably find things that need to be done that can't get done in the regular course of business. Um, but that's that's what I recall about that, is that we would want them to actually come in to work on those days, so they're not short of the pay, and so we can get some stuff done.
It's so long ago that I don't really recall, but I know that what David said is is was part of the conversation, and it was very specifically in uh, without causing themselves any risk. You know, but we don't send buses out because it's X degrees or because of the back roads or whatever, so if someone is willing and able to get to school and there's a job to do with it, we would do that. There was that discussion.
Okay, was there any discussion with regards that you recall on uh, capping the number of days?
I know they don't. I don't understand the question. So if there's a, if your, if school is closed because of weather, we pay teachers regardless under their contract, and then the question is whether non-contract employees like food staff and
Special, yeah.
People that pay on just a regular hourly. Whether they would still get paid for that day? Is that the question?
Yes, and it's, and it was, I'll throw in another layer, uh, it complicates things. There are folks that which are expected to report custodians for snow removal. District office typically show up, you know, to work. Um, so then, you know, the discussion was, well, what and what's fair or equitable to those folks that, you know, you got the work they got paid versus didn't work and got paid, and so um, past, we've, you know, paid down double. So we've paid them extra for that because they came in and.
Because they're just getting paid. Getting paid, but they were getting paid and actually were.
Yeah. And and it really, it never really came up till we had that one stamp of, I think, uh, five days in a row, right? And for an hourly employee, you know, that's half the paycheck, and it really affects them, uh, so we tried to kind of reach that. I um, I just wanted to double check. You guys are sure that we talked about having them come in, because I I'm I have reservations about that. I don't you know, the whole reason we closed schools to safety. Are you sure we didn't confuse that with uh, last um, spring, and if we, you know, we were doing, we were planning about if we come back and and finding things, and then we didn't have that.
Are they getting paid on Fridays right now?
They are not.
The hourly staff that are not showing up on Fridays are not getting paid.
Correct, unless they could, could get some of the hour, cooks cooks are working an extra two hours, um, if each day, uh, Friday and meals. Um, of course, custodians are working, but there's just some that aren't like part professionals, bus drivers, right, there's.
And you're probably right, Tim, that that we are conflating the two. And one of them was the, if we're not at school, there's plenty of things, you know, to to do if they wanted the hours in the COVID uh, spring.
Correct.
I think that's probably what I remember.
I'm thinking, it made me really uncomfortable, and so you're asking them to come in and and I don't think we would have agreed to that. Maybe we talked about it, but now we we close school for safety, right? Safe for students, it's unsafe.
So one option is pay everybody whether they show up or not. I mean, I'm talking about the non-contract, the, pay everybody whether they show up or not, or only pay the people that show up.
Or pay more to the people that show up.
Correct. It's the small most, with custodians and district office. Um, yeah, I would, I would recommend capping it, you know, it's, there's gotta, you know, be a reasonable.
Well, I think reading, reading some of the the previous uh, correspondence that Ben held there. Think there seemed to be an unofficial recognition that we can't have it three days.
I'd say, you know, in my eight years here, it's ranged from one to, I think, eight days. Or I can comment on that, was that five days catch up one year? You know, then you throw in, uh, we've typically taken off for state, that's state football and state basketball, you know, those, those are included in those days as well, where it's the district's choice to close school about employees.
I guess where.
Recommendation, Tim?
I recommend paying support staff um, uh, Clement weather days, or we're did, the the administration decides to close school um, and happen at three. And then the folks that do have to show up and from solid risk, snow removal, et cetera. Um, I would recommend comp time for that, is what we discussed. Comp time where they could turn that eight hours into a, you know, vacation day or whatever. Make cash out comp days. We do not.
You can only comp. Well, it's different when you're state compared. There's a different rule. You can, if you take it within the same pay period, it's less than some day mothers and stuff.
And then can you accumulate the district comp time or five years, five years later, you have a month and a half of comp days?
We don't have a history of comp time. Pam, is there anything that I'm missing in the only ten discussions on this? I see you're on mute, Pam. Did you hear me?
Yes, I did. Tim, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we were talking about not comp time so much as just a personal day.
Okay.
For the people that have, the twelve-monthers that have to come in and work.
And that would fit within what we already do, I mean, we.
That, yeah, that's what we did last Monday, whenever that.
If you roll over annually up to five personal days, a max of five, correct?
Correct. Well, you can roll, you can have a maximum of five, so you can roll over three, then you'd get another two for the next year for a maximum of five.
I mean, so what are we talking about, like, three days as a district or something like that? Max, whatever be, something like that?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I suppose we need uh, emotion, but for events, what we choose to do.
You had referenced some notes for an event. Was was three days discussed in that from a support staff?
I don't think wage benefits, I think that was our discussion, district office. I don't think it was the support staff with the wage benefit. They're holding out all snow days paid for them.
What's the decision of the board?
So realistically, for this to be a policy, we should have no, I I think there should be a historical record of number of snow days that we're talking about, because the past few years, that it be more than three is three the right number.
Tim?
Yes, Pam?
You know, the the year that you're talking about that we had so many, do you remember that we had to make up a couple of the days?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yep, mhm, so they got paid for those.
Certainly came in with that historical information.
Yeah, it it might be helpful, especially under the, considering that instructional days has changed the hours, so so, you know, things are different for makeup days than they used to be.
Oh, I I think we have the time. Would here, you know, we don't have any more equipment like this year, so, you know, we certainly have time.
I would think that that would be information that would be legitimate, more informed.
Tim, just Jeff, um, I think we cap it at the number of days that allow the district not to have to make it up. We don't want to pay them for a day where we're closed and then have to, our budget wouldn't necessarily include another day of pay for them to come back and work, so if we have, you know, in any given year, if we have five days before we have to make up a day, then we'll pay them um, on the six. then we'll pay them. Um, on the sixth day, I'm sorry, you're not going to get paid for this day, but you're going to get paid when, on the day that we make it up. But I agree with Scott. I think we should do a little research and vote on it next meeting.
That's a good point, Jeff. You know, we talked about that, you know, and the, and the support staff brought it up. It budgeted four, right?
Right.
Alliance with that thinking, um, in a, in a typical year prior to this year, that, that number was typically five. Um, any more than that, we would make up to be in our hours of instruction. Well, what that's going to look like moving forward, we don't know, but that's the best number that we have.
So, so a policy could be up to five days, but the last, whatever will be paid at the end of the year after it's determined whether or not there's a makeup day.
Yeah.
You know, so the fifth day might, might be a end of year. Um, make right check.
And we could work that so I can't not to exceed the total number of instructional days.
Right.
Right.
Tenth of the year.
Well, and you, with the, you know, you know, now with the referendum I had about being competitive with other school districts, what are other school districts doing? I'm just curious.
Regarding this?
Yeah.
I, it was on the panel, but I'm sure it's all over the map, like, like most things like this seem to be.
Some will pay, some will not.
They don't, some do, some don't.
Definitely maybe. Okay.
All right. I'll bring that back. Information.
Then we'll move on to the next item is, uh, Brian had requested we put this on here, the discussion regarding facilities use practices. So.
Yeah, it was just a follow-up. We had talked about that back in September, October, that we were going to have a meeting in regards to it. There have been things that have been more pressing for the school, obviously than, than that coming up, but it's just kind of front of mind. Um, again, as I'm helping coach some of the youth volleyball right now and just trying to figure out scheduling and everything, right? So we've got, we're giving Sunday evenings and things like that to do this. And it's hard for parents and everything, bringing the kids and all of that. So it just kind of came up again and just wondering if we could have a meeting and discussion and maybe it would be something where Chance and Brian would do something maybe with like, I don't know, most parties involved from outside groups for those things. Um, whether it's the, the rec program and the CBA and select and, um, community. Maybe put some structure around it instead of first come, first served. Yeah, it'd probably be best.
Just a quick comment. It's, it's probably most beneficial, obviously. Chance Knight would be there, but Wendy Overston is actually our facilities, um, scheduler. She knows all the ins and outs of the entire process. So it might be best to, in doing this, have a meeting and let her kind of explain the current processes, how she sees it, whether that's how it's completely being implemented or utilized. But I think she can probably provide more insight. She and I had a discussion about it today. And she'll be able to provide more information to, to how it can work and how it goes with some of the pitfalls that we're finding. So it's probably best to involve her at the very beginning stages as well.
And this is the forward looking, not a COVID specific?
Yeah, I mean, I was going through it last year. So I can say it's the same thing. It's just, it just seems like our kids are getting three years ago. There were times on this schedule now if you looked now, you know, we have practices kind of all over the board. Um, that's even with seventh grade. Actually in the high school, utilizing high school for some of the youth stuff as well. Not that we shouldn't. Um, but generally we've tried to stay away from those. And this year made it a little harder because we had a lot of basketball games. A really short period of time. So that made it a little even more compact. But, um, yeah, I, I just, I just think that there's some, some ways that we could maybe tweak some things or, or do some things that maybe would help a little bit. Avidate some of it just because I know that Wendy does it. I'm not saying I have the answer.
Chance, do you have anything? I see you're on.
No, I can kind of hear like half of what's going on, but what Brian said, and honestly, I don't know if Greg is on here, but the history of how those things came to be is maybe best described from Wendy and Greg's, um, point of view. And again, not, maybe this is, um, not even in their expertise, but we have two, there's two different calendars. There's the facility use calendar and then there's our middle border athletic activity calendar. And if somehow those were able to be merged, I think it would save a lot of back and forth and checking multiple places to see kind of what Brian's referring to in terms of what's available, what's not available. For all three district buildings. So that's all I got.
Some of my practices are scheduled on one of those calendars and they're not on the other. So somebody actually requests it on the other calendar because it isn't showing up there. Um, so depending on which one people are using. So, yeah, that is.
It's, there's a long history of calendar issues. Uh, am I correct, David? I know you probably brought it up three years ago and it's still an issue that you'd love to solve.
Yeah, it, the mixing and crossing and everything, trying to keep track in too many different places, just it's too much confusion. Um, you know, the, the biggest thing I think, uh, when I originally brought it up to him years ago was, um, you know, parents. We, we have no idea where to look or what calendar to look at because there are so many different calendars.
So I'm hearing parties, parties involved, uh, a meeting should include Chance, Ryan, Greg, Wendy, Brian. Greg. Someone from rec. So rec, CBA. I'm not sure on the front end. Or just start with the schools.
Start with those first five that you mentioned. And I don't know what the process is. And then once that gets straightened out, then I think you can pull in the different members of the different organizations and explain to them moving forward how it will work. I don't know that having so many voices on the front end, um, is what you're going to want. I think we start with Greg, Wendy, Chance, I and Brian. Um, I think that's the best place to start.
Anybody close to that?
I guess. The only concern that I still have is calendar. And I don't know if we any way either to put everything on one calendar or put multiple calendars together with a tab on it. Stating which activities are there. So you know what dates are being used by what activity. And parents that are concerned of what's going on at the elementary would have the elementary school calendar at once, one spot on a website. Calendars would all be on one spot. And if you had tabs, such that you could tap through which, which school you're interested in or which activity. And we would have to look that out, but I would think that would be the easiest way. Get a uniform calendar. So people aren't having to fish through multiple sites on the, uh, on the website and try and find out what's going on and where it is.
And the thing that I've done personally is to avoid that is I have a calendar with an app that I use and that's the master calendar, right? You've seen it for basketball. It's for Jill, Jillian, like Jillian and the only one that calls her Jillian. She looks at me funny when I say it. Um, but I said, no. All the time. So they have one app. That's one. So they don't have to go off look. You know, one, so if there's changes, that's where they go. Maybe we could share that with those groups to make it easier for people as well. Instead of putting it all in the school. Same chance, some voice. All that we didn't rather than to consider at some point.
Some way.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anything else we need to discuss on that issue? Okay. Let's see if we can get it set up and, uh, go forward on it. Okay. Moving on. Is there any other business we need to, uh, address at this time?
I, I have one.
Okay.
Um, and we have to do it just through work and talking to others through work, just think something that's coming with the prevalence of the vaccines coming out and the availability of the vaccines. Um, like at Anderson, we're talking about, um, not no longer giving the additional 10 days that we were giving. Um, as soon as people are eligible for that, if they choose to get it or not, that is on them, but they're not going to get the additional days. They can use their own personal days, DTO days, whatever they have, um, or take it without pay. Um, but we're pulling back, um, and the date's kind of tentative middle of May if they don't know how things roll out. Um, we're going to pull those additional 10 days back, um, from a compensation.
10 days where they would have to be quarantined.
Yeah, the quarantine because of that. Choice.
The COVID day or, or, yeah.
I just wanted to bring it up after we made the decision. But just, we have a couple of months before we'll hit that critical mass timeframe, but, um, I know that personally would feel, I don't know if it's my, if it's our role to really tell the community that as a taxpayer, we should pay that benefit when somebody chooses to do something. So I just, I, I think it would be something to discuss in one of our future meetings.
Well, I think, you know, I have discussed it with other organizations that have been involved with, and I think the general consensus is that we would continue it, uh, till the end of the academic year would be the end of June. Then at that point, we would have to reconsider whether we continue or not. And most of them are not.
So much.
Since we have, since the federal days, my, I don't know that they have been renewed with the, the new one, but based, based on the end of December.
Well, we're the option of extending to March 31st and, um, most, most districts did choose that. We chose the federal days to extend to March 31st. And what you're talking about is the additional Central 10 COVID days on the beginning of the year. Should we, when should we consider? So vaccine becoming prevalent, it's time to reconsider and revisit.
If you take the vaccine, you wouldn't have, and you had a close contact, you wouldn't need the 10 days, right?
You don't have to wear it, correct?
Right. Okay. And there are, in my world, you know, my business is less than 50 employees. So we have federal rules that we have to pay those. Now, like we couldn't change the, you know, we couldn't change those rules. Cause I, you know, and so there's no regulations for schools on those that you're aware of. I don't know.
So, so we were told that those rules are changing at work. So I just was in a meeting that that was hard changing.
You couldn't be under those rules anyway because your business is too big.
So that's because of ACA?
Yeah. It was the first, it was the, no, it was, no, it was the first, whatever in March, that first package that came through. If your, if your employer was less than 50 people. And there's these mandated COVID days. We have to pay so long as these things happen. So there, there isn't that for school. And my point was, is there not?
The, the final one was for all.
Yeah.
I mean, no matter the size of your organization.
No, this one was, this one was only for less than, or we were, there was a number.
Okay.
We were under it. Cause it's potentially making sense to you, but. But the point is that we have the power to do that. That's, that's my policy.
Yeah. Well, I'm just, we just voted for extra, right? So I turned it over and we voted to do that. Team shot. I just think it's a choice, right?
If you look at the guiding principles of why we did it.
Yeah.
Right? It was because.
They had no option. And they were in school.
Yeah, it was because to cover the quarantine, right? Your, it was a risk that, you know, we're asking you to take as part of returning to work. And then so we tried to provide some insurance for the quarantines and sickness, but, you know, the, the vaccine does change things. So I would agree at least to revisit it.
Yeah. I'm not saying we have to change it. It just feels like it's going to be time for that discussion. And maybe we just say we do it through the end of the year and all of that. I think it's, it's coming.
March 31st is a natural mandate for something that's a trend for us to be considering.
Yes, no, cool. Right, but.
I mean, like, just like locally.
Yeah, I, I, as a school member, right, I was eligible and I signed up for it through that. Last week.
I just didn't know what that was.
I got by two by four for two days on my arm, but other than that, it was fine.
We facilitated it through Western Wisconsin Health this past week.
I didn't want to be.
Yes, getting it last week.
I didn't sign up because I didn't want to accidentally get put ahead of any of the teachers or anybody like that. So that's why I went out. Like outside of that uniform.
So. You got it.
To the hospital.
Yeah. So just, I, I just, it, it might be worth the conversation.
Yeah, really interesting.
Put that in a future.
Our teachers are getting it when?
They got, started getting it last Wednesday.
If, if they wanted to, they could, could get it the first shot last Wednesday.
Yep.
And they're doing on the, of the two shot, are they getting like one or one?
Moderna.
Okay.
Four weeks apart.
Okay. So then they'll get the next one in when? So when does that?
Well, you got it last Friday, April 9th.
Okay.
So, and then either, you know, it'll be the.
And so anybody who wanted it, you had it last Wednesday.
Correct.
So everybody's on the same schedule. They took it. They've got the first one already. Or is there like another?
There's a few that chose or scheduled it for this Wednesday and Friday.
Okay.
But we, we, we are, we strongly encourage Fridays because if there are some, some symptoms, you know, what I'm, up to 50 people are missing, right?
No, I didn't know.
There any other business we need to cover then? The conversation of the day, uh, Brian has the same conversation we had at seat 11. And I think the decision there, I think for the ease, ease of employees and the ease of them, both even we decided for that.
That policy.
And then those days will wait. Okay. Then we will, uh, move on to the next item, which is our upcoming important days, uh, coming dates. We've got our borderline meeting on April 5th. Here at the district office, starting at 6:30. Uh, we've got the election on April 6th, which is Tuesday. And our regular, next regular board meeting is scheduled, uh, for here at 7:00 PM on April 9th. So. With that, I would recommend, uh, an entertaining motion to go into closed session. Per Wisconsin State Statute 1985-1F, considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of which specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problem or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to. Such histories or data were involved in such problems or investigations. This has to do with student exam, uh, student assessment exemption that we fled. Uh, also, uh, the Wisconsin State Statute 1985-1C, consideration of employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction that exercises responsibility. Uh, we're to cover, uh, 2020, 2021 Superintendent's Quarterly Goals Review. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So move. Second.
Okay, I have a motion. Scott, second. David, roll, call vote. Brian?
Hi, yes.
Okay, fine. Hi. David?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi. Hi.
Jeff and David, I will send you a separate link.
Send it to my Redmond Law email.
All right, and then we'll, uh, convene in about five minutes?
Yeah, we have about five minutes.
Okay.
Okay.